We're live now. Brad, is it showing up?
Oh, it shows on the home screen.
We'll call the Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Councilmember Karen.
Here.
Zumbuya.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Luce. Spooner.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Mayor Vrachek.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
It states of America, public for which it stands, God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our first meeting in the newly remodeled council chambers. Forgive us for any technology hiccups that we have, but I'm hoping Heather will have them all seamless. Need a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Dumia. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. We have no presentations or introductions tonight. We'll move on to approving the minutes of the June eleventh, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting. Anybody having changes or corrections that need to be made? Any and none. I would take a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Teal, second by Councilmember Spooner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. Looking around the room, we have no requests to be heard tonight. Move on to consent agenda items six, eight through six, L. Do you have anything they want pulled for discussion on those items? Any and none. I would take a motion and a second to approve.
Mayor Vrachek.
Councilmember Dumia.
I make a motion to approve the concerned agenda from A to L.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Karen. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. We have no public hearings tonight. Move on to items for discussion. Resolution twenty-twenty-four dash one-twenty-four authorize an internal loan for the design, construction, and equipping of Viaduct Park. Over to Administrator Kinzer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vrachek. At the last council meeting, you approved the contracts for bid packages one and two, which is really the starting point for us to move forward with getting the documents in place for us to authorize the internal loan from the wastewater fund to fund four oh four, the park improvement fund, for the design, equipping, and construction related to this first phase of the park. One of the things to point out is this resolution is crafted in a way where it is designed to be amended when we are ready to amend it for any of the ICE design fees and construction costs, when those will be known at a future date. The interest rate is five percent, which is what we are seeing on our investments. So the ratepayers of the sewer fund will still be seeing the same return on the investment. And the repayment source will be franchise fees in the park fund, park land dedication fund, most of which will be coming from gas and electric, but a small amount coming from water and sewer. And then as, this will very much be a revolving sort of loan document. As donations come in, and I think it's June and December, or yeah, June and December, it'll be November and May from the foundation remitting payments to us twice annually. Then that will sort of readjust the schedule each time to reduce that principal balance. So this will be very much a living document once we get things moving forward. And essentially, as soon as we start incurring construction costs is when we'll start to see that first transfer happen.
Questions? Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. How often is the, I guess the interest rate renewed? It's not going to be a loan renewal, but how often is the interest rate reviewed? Is it yearly or?
Well, I'm going to figure that out very soon as I start to take over the investment management here in the interim period with no finance director. But yeah, we'll be reviewing that. And I think that's something that it's not to, we want to balance the interest of making sure that the sewer ratepayers see a fair return on investment, but we don't want to hold it at five percent if that's not what the rest of our investments are.
Right.
So we'll be reviewing that periodically throughout the year. We're scheduled to have quarterly payments. And so that's where I think it's really going to be kind of adjusting, but sticking at five percent until we see something that would happen either way in the market to probably move things a percentage point.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it is something I'd like to see kept track of because hopefully the interest rates will go down. You understand that they could go the other way too. So thank you.
Any other questions? Lots of controversy about this park out there. A lot of people that want it. There's a lot of people that think it's a waste of taxpayer money. We always say if everybody was happy, we did something wrong. With that, I don't need to take it out to the public, so I will take a motion and a second to approve the resolution if that is the will.
Mayor Vrachek.
Councilmember Ross.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-four dash one-two-four.
Got a motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Dumia. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Move on to ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash ten. Approve a zoning text amendment to allow laundry services in C-one zoning. First reading. Over to Director Wanberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. The applicant, J.C. and Lonnie Ayers, are asking for a zoning text amendment to allow laundromats in the C-one neighborhood commercial zoning district. The intent of the C-one district is really to provide the establishment of local centers for convenience, office, retail, or service outlets that serve the neighborhood. So as opposed to the C-two, our highway commercial, or our C-three, which is our regional commercial, the C-one really is intended to serve the residents of the community and specifically that neighborhood area. Current uses that are allowed in the C-one district include general retail and sales services. These are outright permitted uses, by right uses. So things like auto parts and accessories, bakery catering, catering, drugstores, pharmacies. Dry cleaning is outright permitted right now, although I will point out that laundry, self-service laundry, laundromats are not outright permitted in the district, but dry cleaning is. Office schools, supplies, those kinds of things. So a lot of different things that are currently allowed in the C-one district. Conditional uses in the C-one district include convenience, gas station stores. At one time, we had the four quick trips in town. We're down to three now. Three of those four were in the C-one district. And we do not have that many other C-one locations. We do have the Central Avenue Wash Laundromat. That's in the C-one districts. Glenn's is in the C-one district. But as I mentioned, you know, the other quick trips on the east side, the one we had on the south side, that was in the C-one district. So that's mostly the types of things that we've had. But other conditional uses would be shopping center, restaurant, library. Place of assembly would be allowed in that. Our city planner, Harry Davis, did a deep dive into what other cities are doing, particularly our peer cities. And you can see that virtually all of them allow laundromats by right or outright permitted. No performance standards, just in a C-one district, a laundromat is allowed. Dry cleaning in most of the places, just like the city of Faribault, it is outright allowed in the district. This is really clarifying that laundromats would also be allowed in the C-one district. The planning commission did have a fair amount of discussion on this. Ultimately, the planning commission with a four-to-one vote recommended approval of the ordinance that you have before you tonight that would allow laundry services as a by-right use in the C-one district. There was one dissenting vote on that. They supported the idea of laundry services as a conditional use. And the philosophy behind that was if it's a conditional use, then you can start putting some conditions on there related to hours of operation or whatever else you might want to put on there that relates specifically to that. But again, the planning commission did recommend with a four-to-one vote that you do similar to our peer cities and just allow laundromats outright. Our, with that, I will say that the recommendation that you have before you tonight is to approve the first reading of the ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash ten. That allows it as an outright use. And the applicant is available tonight. That if you do have any questions, questions if you do have questions of the ordinance or what his intent is. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Director Wanberg. Any questions on this item? Seems pretty straightforward. Then most of the other cities have got it, and I'm sure a laundromat's going to business on a gas station next door. With that, I would take a motion and a second to approve if that is the will.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Spooner, second by Councilmember Teal. All in favor say aye. All ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Karen. Zumbuya.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Spooner.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Mayor Vrachek.
Aye. All right. That one passes first reading. It'll back in two weeks. Resolution twenty-twenty-four dash one-thirty-two declaring a local state of emergency for the city of Faribault, Minnesota. Over to Director Kinzer.
Yes, I'm actually going to turn this over to Chief Deans as well to just provide a general update. But this is the resolution that allows the council to adopt the proclamation that the mayor signed on Saturday related to the flood event. And so I'll turn it over to Chief Deans to provide an update.
Oh, this is testing? All right. I like being a guinea pig. So, as you all know, it's an even year. So that's why we're doing what we're doing. So of course, on Friday, we saw what was coming, not to the level that it ended up being, but we were in anticipation of flooding happening at some level. So crews were, or city staff was preparing for this. They were doing some sandbagging and, or filling sandbags and getting ready for this. Also, sand and bags were made available for the public in case we got to that level, which of course we did. The police department did start taping off hazardous areas as the water came up, mostly around the Woolamills Dam. And then, of course, it kept coming up and kept coming up. We were monitoring all along. One thing I really want to stress in this event that has been different than other events, one reason is because we've had other events and we're getting better at it, unfortunately, or fortunately. But we've had great coordination between admin, our partners at the county, having Brad, Susie. A lot of coordination has happened this time that hasn't happened in the past. It's making the, it's making it a better process, even though some might not think so out there. But in the long run, it will be a very good process. A common messaging, county, city, we're doing, we're using common language, and it's a lot less, a lot less confusing. Not totally unconfusing, but less confusing. We've also been in contact with the public sector where we need to, the Cheese Caves, the Woolamills. Thankfully, a lot of the mitigation that they've done since our last flooding has helped them out amazingly. The Woolamills, you could walk around in the basement in flip flops and not get wet. As you know, we declared with the paperwork on Saturday about around five-thirty. This is making it official. But in coordination with the county and seeing what was coming, we thought it would be a good idea to get that happening as soon as possible. On Sunday, if you, any of you were out and about, this was a very, very busy city. There was people everywhere. There were multiple reasons. I believe the flood was probably one of them. But that made for some challenges that we haven't had to deal with in the past. The police department was overwhelmed with the amount of people that needed to be standing in the river to get a good picture, is I guess a way I can put it. They were not obeying tape or barricades. So we pulled out some more resources to bring them in to assist with monitoring of intersections and trying to keep people back. And also, we filled five-hundred-plus sandbags at the Public Works Building with streets and parks in anticipation of some utilities on the west side, not knowing what lift stations or how they were going to be affected. Because truly, this is a different flood, like they all are different. But we've not, never dealt with carp on Seventh Street, or Baker Trail, or Western. So this is a little bit different flood than we're used to. Good, bad, or otherwise, we can't stop the water, but we're dealing with it. We've been monitoring gauges. I'm happy to report that the Cannon River at Morristown is down one point two inches. I just got a text from the Morristown Fire Chief, another example of the coordination that we have with all of our county partners. We're continuing to bypass pump, we being the city, but utilities where it is necessary. And we're still keeping track of businesses that are be, that could be affected if things go south or if they had problems with their mitigation projects that they had in the past. Yesterday, as some of you already know, calls started coming in about volunteering and wanting to help. And kind of the timing was good for us also getting some calls on people that needed help. So that is a, that's a, that's a huge effort to put that together on not just a city-wide process, but we want to do it as a county-wide. And we actually invited La Sura County to be a part of this so that we could have all of our teams going wherever they are needed. So that really came to fruition this afternoon. We have a process, Brad, been very integral in getting this process lined up on the website so we can take, we can get volunteers and we can get people that in need and coordinate those. We have, no, I won't get ahead of myself. Also, what happened yesterday was we got a request from the Red Cross to open up a shelter for Waterville, La Sura County residents. They didn't have a big enough shelter over there for the number. So of course, we said yes. We have a sheltering agreement and a plan out at the National Guard Armory. So we got that rolling yesterday. And the Red Cross is set up and that opened at about four P.M., at four P.M. We did have one family check in right away at four P.M. We really don't have an idea how many people there will be. They were expecting fifty to seventy from La Sura County. And of course, Rice County, I haven't had anybody outright reach out to say I need sheltering, but I think the need is there or once it's available, they might take advantage of that. Along with that, sheltering is resources, mental health, how to deal with insurance companies, how to fill out paperwork for FEMA if we were to get individual assistance. Had a meeting today with HSCM, Homeland Security Emergency Management. We likely, the state hasn't put in the paperwork yet for a federal declaration, but Cook, Minnesota alone is estimating fifty million dollars. That puts us over our threshold. So we will get to our threshold. And I can confidently say that we, it will be a federally declared disaster. So that's good. That opens up the first strings from the federal government to help out those, although we all know that individual assistance sometimes is not that easy to get. But we will, we will have resources at the National Guard Armory to help fill out that paperwork. We have county employees out there from mental health, from social services to help people that come out there, whether they stay at the shelter or not. So it's a, it's a big effort that came together in about a day and a half, but it will serve our citizens better than doing it on islands. The water still is flowing across Baker Trail, although it has gone down. I think if anybody, some of us had went out there and there's a few more carp being stranded because the water is getting shallower. That is something that we're going to hear about here shortly is what are we going to do with these fish that are now stranded in my backyard? Don't have an answer yet, but we'll figure something out. We always do. I did get a call today, and I think it has, I'm pretty sure it has something to do with the Rapidan Dam and how that failed. We do have water flowing around the spillway at the Woolamills. So we went and looked at it. Director Duchaine and Travis Block went out to check that out. No real big concerns there. Is that correct? It's a different dam than that's down there. It's a more mellow flow, not as deep, nice sod. So we will continue to monitor that to make sure that we don't, not that we can do much about it, but we can surely see what's happening. We did send firefighters over to Morristown on Saturday night because they were worried about that dam. Their people were tapped out and tired, so we gave them a break. Our guys over there on overnight watched just. That's a real quick summary of a lot of things that have been going on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Questions for Chief, Councilmember Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Wastewater treatment plant still operating as it should?
It is. And Travis and his crews have been watching that. They're the, try to pick out some bright, bright things in this situation and the mitigation efforts that we as a city have done in the past have also made this a different situation where we don't have to get everybody and their brother out to the treatment plant and take care of that. We were, really have to do anything. Their crew, and that sounds terrible. Travis's crews and Henry and those guys out there were doing their thing, and they were maxed out in water going through there. But it was a lot lower on the priority list this year because of the mitigation efforts that we put in place over the last few years.
Good to hear. I see this emergency expires the end of the day on June thirtieth. Does the mayor have the unilateral ability to extend it? Or does he have to create a new emergency if it, something were to happen and we're going to extend past June thirtieth?
Yeah, so we were contemplating that we have a planned work session on July second. And so if there, if we still have water in places where we haven't been able to uncover damages and things at that point, or if there's additional rain that causes things to increase, that we would be coming back on July second with a special council meeting for that purpose in addition to the work session.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spooner?
Is there anything that can be done specifically? Three young gentlemen in bathing suits walking deep into the water. This is at a point where they're just not down there to get a fish. Gets swept away. What can be done about?
So we're doing our best to get the word out with Brad and Susie and to make awareness of how dangerous not only the current is, but the, what's in that water. And so we're, we're doing public awareness. That truly was our biggest headache over the weekend was, yeah, we had to deal with the water, but dealing with the public was, was worse. And people just don't know. Every person that I told that was standing in their crocs in the water, when I told them what was in that water, they ran out of there pretty quickly. But others, I had one gentleman tell me that, I don't, I'm not worried about Ross, who was in the office. So we, we kind of, by the end of the day, we were, I called Chief Sherwin and were like, we can't man this for the duration. We got to let the barricades do the talking, and if they go in there, we don't have the resources to patrol people's backyards along the river, the roads. Yeah, we were chasing people around on our UTVs, not literally, but we were, we were getting reports of people in the water, and we'd go there and they'd take off running because they yelled at. But we, I think we, public awareness is all we can do. And we, I don't know, we can't yell there all the time and tell them. I wish we, I wish there was a way to, and I hope nobody gets sick or gets hurt from that, but I don't know. We don't know what to do anymore.
Councilmember Dumia.
Is there any way you can, for the benefit of those who will probably listen to this or watch this, can you give a brief summary of areas that were affected in the city and also city infrastructure that were affected? Or that is still being affected?
I'm, I'm not hearing your real.
Yeah, I was wondering for the benefit of who, the public, if you could just give a little update of areas, maybe streets that are currently closed or areas people shouldn't go around or, you know, something like that.
Sure. So right now, we were able to open up Second Avenue yesterday. And so that, that took some pressure off of some of the other streets and moved traffic back to a little more normal pattern. But the King Mill Dam area is, is still going to be closed, I think, four days. We don't know exactly when it's going to crest. They're not forecasting a crest because this has never happened and there's no models. There's no, there's no history here to go on to figure out a crest. So that's why there hasn't been one. Now, if I look at the Morristown Dam gauge, for about the last twenty-four hours, it's went steady to inch and a half down just before the meeting started. That's a good sign. But King Mill Dam area, stay away from that area. And also, it's not river flooding, but out by Faribault Foods and Sage Glass, there's an area with that big wetland that that road, that road, this is the second time that road has been closed this year because of high water. Those are the only two closures right now.
And any other infrastructure issues? Pumps that have gone down or?
We'll defer to Director Block.
Thank you, Mayor Vrachek, members of the council, and the public. So from an infrastructure standpoint, we've not had any compromises to any lift stations. You have bypass pumping in the system as Director, Chief Deans mentioned. That mainly at this point is to prevent backups in homes. It's not, we have one pump in the system right now that's currently to provide a little bit of relief to the treatment plant because we're at, we pushed fifteen million gallons through in the peak there for a couple of days. And just before the meeting, it was down around ten million gallons with the industries, with our two big industries, wet industries running, being Faribault Foods and Genio. So, but we're going to, we're just, we'll just be monitoring those distribution or collection system, I'm sorry, pumping to just until that situation goes away. We are currently, excuse me, working on a sanitary repair out on, along Highway twenty-one in the area of Green Street with, it's still kind of in its exploratory phase, but we're, we're working on what the actual cause is there. So we're working on that. But otherwise, from an infrastructure at this point, nothing that has been.
Did I cover both of your questions? Got two points in there. Okay, perfect. Okay. All right. Any other questions? I just got one this morning. Is this going to delay the pool opening? Paul's not here. All right. So I thought it was an oddball question, but it's legitimate. So, so for updates and other things, keep your eye on Facebook, Twitter, and the city's website. And Brad will keep pushing those out. So thank you, Brad. You're earning your wages this week. That's good. Anything else for the chief?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Spooner?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Spooner, second by Councilmember Teal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution passes. Any, we have no bids tonight. So board commission reports, announcements, project updates. We just got our flood update. Anything else going on?
Mayor, I think we should, you know, thank not only our staff, because like Chief Deans said, we had firefighters go over and help out in Morristown. But I had some involvement over in the Waterville area, which is quite devastating over there. And I know there's a lot of Faribault residents, you know, citizens that went over there and helped. So I think we just deserve a thank you to not only our staff, the city, but also citizens that have helped out, neighboring communities.
Thank you to all the people that have volunteered in one way or another and helped us step up and get things done. That's how we get through it as a city. Heritage Days was last week. So rain stopped just long enough. Go out there. That seems like a long time ago. Okay? Okay. Administrator Kinzer?
On, the budget work calendar, or budget calendar is going to be changing, as I mentioned, and so we will have a meeting on July 2nd, and we will be talking about new personnel as well as some other items that have come up that are not budget-related. One thing that I need to add is I thought we had Tuesday, August 6th, as a work session date, but that is the 19th. So unfortunately, I need to claim that 5th Tuesday in July, July 30th, and make that a budget work session date. So I apologize in advance for the loss of the 5th Tuesday. I think we can blame the first loss of a 5th Tuesday on Tim, but this one's on me. But yeah, so I'll, I'll update that on the calendar as we, as I get that updated here, hopefully by the end of the week or early next week, because I kind of have a better idea of how things are going to flow. But please, if you can put that on your calendar.
Don't run away because we've got a meeting after this. We'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Dumia. All in favor say aye?